Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone this evening to our Swan County Board of County Commissioners meeting of December 1, 2020 at six p.m. If everyone please stand for our invitational pledge. I appreciate your attendance.
Father, we come once again in your holy name. Thank you for all your blessings. Thank you for how you've always had your blessings. You know that you're too wise and too just to make a mistake. Father, we pray that you follow your leadership, follow your God. Everything will be all right. Now bless this day, bless our commissioners this day. Keep us safe, marked at harm and danger, watch your word. Give us the strength, give us the right mind, do your will, for we realize that we lean and depend on you in all that we do. We pray, God, that you're blessed, make away for us, keep us safe. And we thank you and we pray and trust in your holy name. Father, we ask thee with many more blessings than Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, I'd like to welcome everyone this evening. Our first item of business is approval amendments from our November 10th, November 11th, and November 17th meetings. Do I have any questions, comments, or do I have a motion to approve? I have a motion by Commissioner Fleming.
Second.
Second by Commissioner White. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Moving ahead to our consent agenda, we have items two through eleven. Do I have any questions or comments, or do I have a motion to approve those items?
Thank you, motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hale.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Land. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Under Commissioner's items, I have, I'm gonna have Mr. Jimmy Norris come up in just a moment. He has the quick update. He's come forward, sir.
Just wanted to give you a quick update, and I want to bring in Commissioner Hale with us as well on this. We had an opportunity yesterday to go out to visit our new sawmill, to meet the guys at Bender Holtz. They called and requested that the commissioner come and give us a quick overview of what's going on out there, and please chime in at any minute. But, you know, it's really exciting. You can already tell the difference, the place they're out there cleaning up, they're doing a lot of stuff. They had, I think they said twenty-five or so actual employees out there at this point working, they're welding, they're tearing down chains, machines.
Not interrupt you, but it is amazing, guys, just to see the hydraulic lines, probably miles of it, that are being replaced and fixed, concrete repair. I just made a list of things.
Yeah, yeah.
The chain repair.
Yes.
I can't tell how many, it seems like thousands, thousands of feet of chain that were being repaired out there. And then you asked them at the end about the equipment.
Yes.
And things of that nature. And I guess you don't think about, some of you guys probably do, frankly, you're in the business of heavy equipment, stuff like that, but when you walk up to a front end loaded and the tires taller than yours, I mean, that's a huge piece of equipment.
Yeah, above a million dollar machine is what they say.
Yeah, it really is. And don't quote me on this, but I think I heard him say that they had talked about having to put twenty million into it, and now they're upwards around thirty to thirty-five million.
That's what they're estimating to make all the complete repairs that they need to make, plus buy some of the needed equipment that, a lot of that stuff got cannibalized as, you know, maintenance, we talked about, and they shared this with us, this is the first thing to go whenever something like that starts happening. So they're rebuilding some equipment, they're gonna be buying some new equipment. We also tracked through some of the sludge out there that some of us are familiar with, where they're storing logs, and they told us they're gonna be paving ten acres, I believe is correct, for in the log yard area, so that that no longer is an issue. But they're just, they're doing their hardest, they reached out to us, and they just wanted to let us know they're out there working. I know they're gonna be meeting with the county to work through, you know, still working through some of the logistics stuff and things like that, but it's good to go out and see progress.
I would like to add, for the public to know moving forward, that there's been some conversation with those folks about the slow payment of what happened with the company before, about getting the funds to the people that produce the logs.
Yep.
And so those people are aware, and they're very much, I think some things have already happened to where they've had vendors and things working out there.
They've got them out there now. Yep, subcontractors.
Where they're paying them faster than what they even should at this point. So they understand the situation that we was in with this other, and they know that they need to make, set a good example straight out the gate, so.
We were told by one individual that they, you know, you turn the building, one week to get paid in the next. You know, business world, that's kind of useful, usually it's a thirty-day cycle. And I would like to say there's several local vendors, we got confirmation of that yesterday and saw some of them out there, so they are coming to us to get people to work with them. Also, you know, I don't know if we talked about this, but the timber company out there, that Big Ben Timber, that located where the old Bark facility was, you know, they looked in out there, and they've already had discussions with them about working with them, and that was one of their biggest providers and suppliers of logs initially. So that relationship is already taking place. Right now, it's looking like probably gonna be close to February when they kick off the holidays, and they're struggling mightily as we all are to get product and get equipment. But they tell us done some of the stuff they've got ordered now, they're saying it's gonna be middle of January before it comes in.
And they've been on order for three months trying to get the parts to repair some of the.
And it's all specialty pieces. It's not like you can go to, you know, Walmart or something, just go get a widget or whatever it is you're looking for. All this stuff is specialty pieces, European type of equipment, so. But you can already tell a big difference. I mean, they're doing everything from making roof repairs out there to parking lots, to even if you've been out there where the log yard is, where all the big containers that they drop all the different sizes of logs in, over the years of closing of being there, the pavement actually went down quite.
Yeah.
Yeah, inch and a half, two inches maybe, from the logs dropping itself. They took every bit of that, tore it all out, and they repaved that area as well. So it's good stuff, and they're excited, and they told me to please reach out. They want once a month for me to carry somebody out here to visit. So I'm gonna be looking to go out there again in the middle of December, so anybody's interested just, you know, let me know, and we'll go out there and take the tour.
Anybody got any questions for Mr. Norris?
Mr. Chairman, he answered the question that I was, you know, I knew it said that some people, individuals out there working, but they haven't hired anybody that would be running the log yard and stuff like that. So I don't think so. I think this is maintenance.
Mostly just maintenance crew, but yeah, they're working for Bender Holtz, but yeah, mostly on the maintenance side of things now, like the welding and the fabrication and stuff, not the actually operators that'll be running the equipment and the actual log yard as well as the sawline.
Are they gonna come stop with the three hundred and fifty workers, employees, or you have, we got that play game.
No, 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 that is not Bender Holtz, and I think we've, and some of our meetings made this very clear, they are not gonna go with the same mold that was there before. They're not about quantity, it's about quality. And they, and they reiterated this yesterday, they will give one shift on, and that one shift, when that shift is perfected and everything at that plant is perfected, then they will go to shift two. When that is perfected, they will go to the third shift, and at that point, they will be back up with those four dunkers. So you're looking at, you know, they're gonna be a hundred or so, plus the first time, the second time, and the third time. So they're not looking to hire three hundred people and then just hope it works out. These guys are very meticulous in how they're approaching this, so.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. All right, thank you. Appreciate the update.
Yes, sir.
Move around just a little bit right here on a couple of items. Under general business, the annual committee appointments is my responsibility, and I'm gonna pull that item for tonight and bring it back at our next regular scheduled meeting. And I'll have that, those appointments concluded. Also, an additional agenda item, Mr. Harris, you can run us up to speed on that.
I got a phone call from Bradford Four-H plus. One thing they'd like to do is decorate in front of the old dump park building down in Bradford like this, how the storefront should be decorated, is what it sounds like. They'd like to have authorization to do that. And then they would like to know if the board has any interest in allowing them to use that old building for their meetings down there. They said it's a long drive to come up here to the extension center, and they would propose that they have the opportunity to be in that building down there. So that's a question. I guess first, the most important question might be, I'm not answering, whether or not we would authorize them to go ahead and decorate, probably that building for Christmas.
I mean, I don't have any issue with that at all. Far as the inside of the building, far as, what you're saying, convenience?
For the regular meetings, we're not there for that.
Do we have any, anything that prevents us from doing that? Mr. Babb?
We'll have to have an agreement with them. There'd be some minor things that I have to keep up with.
Is the building up?
But it'd probably be through the extension center that we'll have to do the agreement.
Is the building up to standards?
I think it's gonna need to be inspected. Different conditions at different times that I've been down there. It needs to be inspected to make sure that it's suitable.
I think it's a board consensus to let them decorate it for Christmas, and then I think we need to follow up and get an inspection. And, I mean, I think the board's all in favor of letting them use it, we just need to make sure it's up to the speed for them to use it. If everybody's okay with that, is consensus okay?
Yep.
So we'll move forward like that.
Okay.
All right. We'll back up now to county attorney items, Mr. Babb.
Yes, sir, I have an item for this evening. I've been informed that some of you commissioners have wondered, or maybe some of the people that viewed the video of the last board meeting have contacted y'all and have inquired why I sat idly by while Commissioner Land read his prepared statement during the last meeting. I wanna start with saying that, as I've told all of y'all, I am not the sixth commissioner. It's my job to keep y'all from doing something that is just not in compliance with the law. I'm not a commissioner. Commissioner Land, he stepped to the podium to address the board with a prepared statement. Did he direct a question for legal response to me? No. Did he even ask me for general comments to his statement? No. He made his statement, just as other commissioners do, and sat down. What probably kept me from speaking was the final part of the statement though, wherein he said he was not stating that anyone broke the law. With that, I agree. And had he asked me at that time, I would've told him that I agreed with that statement. But here's the real deal, and this is in a nutshell. Commissioner Land has suggested that county should spend county surplus funds, not budgeted funds, to purchase additional property not needed for an approved public purpose. They should hold that property as an investment, and then at some undetermined time in the future, flip the property to another buyer in hopes of making a profit. That's how I characterize it.
That's incorrect.
However, there is a serious flaw with his rationale. Both our local ordinance, Article Nine, Sections 470, 70 dash 471 through 473, and the state statute, 218, 415, simply do not allow the county to be real estate investment flippers. Commissioner Land may have learned how to make a buck in the private sector as a real estate flipper in his real estate classes at FSU, but such is not an approved investment of public funds. Surplus funds are statutorily defined as any funds in any general or special account or fund of a unit of local government which in reasonable contemplation will not be immediately needed for public purposes therein intended. In other words, any public funds that are in excess of a mouse needed to meet current expenses are surplus funds. Local government units such as a county are authorized to make investments with the funds. That's what's authorized under 218, 415. Such investment policies are stated by the statute that they shall be structured to place the highest priority on the safety of principal and the liquidity of the funds. Again, they highlight that the optimization of investment returns shall be secondary to the requirements for safety and liquidity. The legislature has directed that as local governments adopt investment policies, local governments shall adopt the prudent person rule, which states, "Investments should be made with judgment and care under circumstances in prevailing, which persons of prudence, discretion, and intelligence exercise in the management of their own affairs, not for speculation, but for real investment, considering the probable safety of their capital as well as the probable income to be derived from that investment." Further, our local ordinance, and as it's referenced back to the state statute, says that there are only four things of limited purpose that the county can invest their funds in. The local government surplus funds trust fund, which is another intergovernmental investment pool that was set up by the state, and the county can invest in that. They can invest in securities and exchange commissions, registered money market funds, but those money market funds also have to have the highest rating that the funds can have. They can also invest in interest-bearing time deposits or savings accounts in qualified public depositories as statutorily defined. And finally, they can invest in direct obligations of the U.S. Treasury. Nowhere is real estate investment and flipping one of the delineated permissible investments, period. The county had budgeted funds for the public purpose of acquisition of property for a fire station to serve the north end of the county. Mr. Harris was tasked with acquiring what was perceived by Commissioner Hale as a desirable ten-acre piece of property, albeit out of nineteen point six one acre parent tract upon which the county could erect the fire station and within budget. Was that task accomplished? Yes. Did it serve as the basis for the recent seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from the state for the construction of the fire station? Yes. Did the county breach its trust of holding public funds and make an improper investment? No. What Commissioner Land has suggested that should have been done by the county was purchase the whole property, if not needed for a designated purpose, designated public purpose, but then wait for years to allow DOT to confirm the new traffic patterns, and then eventually sell it to the public. This practice may be good business in the private sector, but it's simply contrary to the law on public investments. Commissioner Land is a new commissioner. I think that you commissioners that have been serving would probably agree with me that there is a learning curve to fully understanding the nuances and the performing of your duties of your office. He, like all of you at the beginning of your tenures, still has a lot to learn about the nuances and differences between conducting public business versus private business. I think you would also agree with me that when you were elected, you were not fully prepared to address any and all issues that may have come before you in the first month. Education, training, inquiry, guidance, and especially experience are all part of the process. And I continue to be privileged to be of assistance to all of you in this process, and we continue to offer my assistance. However, there is one thing that I can't agree with Commissioner Land on. He said, "Mr. Babb stated that the county had given the applicant an easement to use the county's access point." Quite frankly, I did make such a similar statement, and my statement was incomplete, and it was incorrect. The adjoining landowner that he was worried about, Mr. Adams' company, the insight property has not been granted an easement or any other access across county property. And I will apologize if my incomplete statement was misinterpreted for the purpose for which I was making the statement and has caused Commissioner Land to be angsty. The complete message that I was intending to convey was a reference to future planning for the access to U.S. 129 in that general area, that all of the landowners of properties, whether they're to the north or to the south, would have access to U.S. 129 via the same county-desired access point. That's what the plan has been, and that's what we've been working toward, and that is what the goal is out there, is to work toward the DOT and our goal of limiting access to U.S. 129. I don't have any further comment. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Do I have any questions or comments for Mr. Babb?
Yes, sir. I disagree with your statement. I do agree that I didn't ask any questions, frankly, because I was not aware that Mr. Harris was not gonna be present at the last meeting. I was prepared to speak, and that's what I did. Unfortunately, he wasn't here. His name was bounced around in that speech many times. I never suggested in that speech that we purchased that property as an investment to flip to an investor at later time. I did state in the, toward the bottom, that we, the county, could sell that property later, after the smoke cleared on the DOT construction plans, based on where the red light locations, turn lanes, who knows, median cuts. Once we know where those are at, then we sell whatever we don't need. If it's for profit, fantastic. If it's for the same price as what we purchased, fine. However, I do believe it would've been for profit after the construction occurs with DOT. Never did I state we need to buy all of this property so solely we can sell it to an investor as a speculative flip land deal. You're incorrect with that statement. Secondly, I may have only been on the job for a month and be uneducated in the field of ethics, in the field of how county government works, but I know right from wrong. I know right from wrong, and I will ask you a question now that Mr. Harris is here. I knew this was gonna come up, so I made a few notes. You had a week to prepare, as I did last week, so you're probably a little more prepared than I, but, I mean, we can talk about it again next week if you'd like.
Mr. Land, let's, I want you to have all the time, but just let's be respectful to each other.
How am I being disrespectful, Chairman?
I think you're just trying to come across very strong, and I just wanna have an open conversation when everybody can understand everything. That's all I'm asking, not being disrespectful to you.
Well, I haven't, you discussed for tonight, I haven't. I haven't.
That was last week.
Yeah, I agree. I'm speaking.
Move it forward. I'm just, I wanna keep peace here, that's all I'm, that's all I'm saying. I want everything to be discussed.
I wanna do what's right or wrong, and if that means breaking the peace, I will apologize in advance. I'm not gonna be disrespectful about it. I got questions, I got people in my district that are pressing me for answers. I've yet to get them. I'm trying to do it peacefully, I'm being respectful tonight. I mean, I'll apologize if people don't like the questions that I'm gonna ask, but they will be respectful. Mr. Babb, did you ever contact any of the landowners between the Insights property and the Busy Bee and asked them, or suggested them, that they should change their zoning to commercial?
No, sir.
If you did not, okay. All right. Have you ever spoken to Mr. Glenn Byrd, Glenn Allen Byrd? Have you ever spoke to Glenn Allen Byrd?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. When, when the county, when Mr. Hale contacted Mr. Cobble and asked Mr. Cobble if he'd sell property to the county for a fire station, whose decision was it to put a parcel, that purchase contract, in Mr. Randy Harris's sole name as an undisclosed confidential agent for the principal, for the buyer? And why would we do that? Why would we, why would we put the contract in Mr. Harris's personal name as a undisclosed confidential? It wasn't confidential. Mr. Hale had already talked to Mr. Cobble. Mr. Cobble was well aware of why we were looking for the property and what we wanted to do with it. Now, according to Mr. Cobble, he would've sold the back piece only, but that was never discussed with you and Mr. Harris. It was for the whole parcel and the whole parcel only. So if you state that I'm incorrect in stating that we shouldn't have bought all the property for investment, why were you and Mr. Harris so inclined to buy it all for yourselves in Mr. Harris's sole name?
I'm sure there was a question in there other than that last one, but.
You can answer all of them.
Let me go back to the beginning of the process of what, how we acquired properties in the past. It is a typical thing that we have a two-step process to be able to acquire properties that may be of interest to the county. The process is first to go get an option on the property. Mr. Harris nor I are authorized to sign a contract to purchase. That is y'all's sole task to be able to do that. What we do is we acquire an option. Some of the properties that we have purchased, like for this sewer plant, and for the water plant, and other properties that we have acquired, have been gone to the owners, and we acquire the property as an option. Either he does it, or I do it for the law firm, through the law firm, for the undisclosed client. I mean, like the folks out there at Welborn. It is a good process, it's used statewide, you invite them to law offices and acquisition officers.
Okay.
Because that's the appropriate way to be able to do it. We get an option, we bring the property then to y'all, y'all then approve what we are to purchase, and that's when you sign the contract. That's how that process works.
According to, according to the minutes that I have read, according to speaking to the previous commissioners, as well as some other folks, in that contract negotiation, it's my understanding that the option to purchase all of the property was never brought to the board. What the board was aware of and authorized, or made authorized to purchase, was only the back piece, in which Mr. Cobble said he would have sold just the back piece, but no way in the world would he have sold the front piece only and been stuck with the back piece because he realized, even him, that all the value in that parcel was on the front footage, highway footage on 129, the parcel that Mr. Adams ended up with. So that makes, this makes no sense. If Mr. Cobble would've sold only the back piece, why did we write a, why did you guys write a contract on the whole piece? And then, and then secondly, why was Mr. Adams, and how did Mr. Adams, did he win a lottery ticket? I mean, how was he chosen to come in to buy that piece at the same price per acre as what we paid for clearly an inferior piece with only ninety foot, sixty foot of frontage, and he got almost thirteen hundred? How did, if you guys, you and Mr. Harris, Mr. Harris has got a salary of a hundred and thirty thousand, I don't know what we pay you, but it's a lot of money to watch out for the taxpayers of Swan County. If y'all knew that the whole parcel was available to purchase for an additional sixty-seven thousand, I still stand by my fact that we should've bought it, the county should've bought it. But according to the minutes and the two previous commissioners that are no longer up here, that was never brought to the table. But you guys knew it, and you aren't supposed to have Swan County's taxpayers' best interest at heart. So with all the money that they're paying you guys, how did they get stuck with the piece in the back? For the same, for the same price per acre as the guy in the front paid for all the roof frontage? Now, you can give me the speech about surplus and investments, and that's all ordinance, that's not common sense. Now, it may not be the law, but the unknown thing is, the unknown thing is, the unknown thing of why we should've bought it all, 'cause nobody knows where the red lights, the roundabouts, the turn lanes, the median cuts, Mr. Harris himself has admitted to me. We're still uncertain on what's gonna happen there. So we could've had thirteen hundred and fifty feet to work with? So, we could have had thirteen hundred and fifty feet to work with, instead we got ninety. And the fellow that used to live across the street from Mr. Adams, from Mr. Harris, got the rest. Now, I may be new, but I wasn't born yesterday. There's smoke all around it. I, I'd like to know how Mr. Adams got to the table and why, if y'all knew that we had an option...
Mr. Harris can address that.
And why, if y'all knew that the whole parcel was available, why did we get just the back piece?
I was directed.
Okay. Well, Mr. Harris, you want to answer that? I got folks looking for answers.
I want to.
I gotta have them.
Give me just a minute, I want to. Mr. Pervat, you finished what you, anything you needed to speak to.
Yes, sir. I still stand by the statement that we were directed to acquire ten acres. It ended up being eleven when we had, got the leg, I'm going to call it, you know, when it got out to, to the front. Any purchase other than that was, was not authorized. We were not directed to do anything any different than that. The ability to have an option on the entire piece, as I understood, was that, that Mr. Cobble never advised me that anything other than all of the property would be for sale or sold, period. And that's why, how, why I directed or got directed to draft that option to purchase in that fashion. When we got down to the final contract on it, the contract was signed by Commissioner Gambel, I think, but it was only for the eleven acres that we were directed to acquire.
Which is the only, if I may, which is the property that me and Mr. Cobble talked about?
Um, maybe Mr. Cobble doesn't remember it correctly, Mr. Hale, but, but Mr. Cobble is saying that he gave the, the county two options. Either you buy it all or you can buy the back piece. And we were, we were, according to Mr. Cobble, we were given those two options, but in no way, shape or fashion would he sell the front piece and not the back. Now, this is where it gets cloudy. So, if we didn't need the front piece and we only wanted the back piece, how did Mr. Adams end up with the front piece at the same price we paid? Under the original contract with Mr. Cobble, I got a copy of it. The original contract with Mr. Cobble that tied up this parcel was with him and Mr. Harris with an assignability clause. The contract that's on public record was, was signed at closing between the Board of County Commissioners and Mr. Cobble as a simultaneous closing for both tracks. Now, if Mr. Harris is an employee of Swanee County getting paid a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year, if that contract was in his name with the whole property, shouldn't he came back to the board and said, "Hey, guys, for sixty-seven thousand dollars, we can buy this whole track and we got twenty acres to figure out where we want to put our fire station based on where the curb cuts go. We don't know where that's going to be, but in order for us to get that grant money, we've got to have a piece of property bought and secured or they're not going to release the funds." We accomplished the same thing. We find sixty-seven thousand dollars in the budget. I'll find it for you tonight if you want. We can find that kind of money without touching surplus funds. That, there's still smoke and I still don't have answers and Mr. Harris has yet to comment. Please interject me at any time.
Well, I'm just trying to let everybody have time to honor this, what I'm saying. I just, and I appreciate you being respectful and what I want to ask is, in a moment, we're going to have Mr. Harris, he's going to comment and I ask you just to let him have his hold.
Yeah, yeah, I did with Mr. Pervat.
And whatever notes you make that you want to have questions back, we'll do that. I just, you know, we're grown folks here and I don't want to run this like we see things run on TV. I want to be professional and I want to let everybody have their, I'm...
I got you. I'm, I'm good.
Mr. Land, I'm not being disrespectful. I'm, I'm not being disrespectful to you, but I'm telling you, I set these meetings before and saw the train run off the tracks. And if you don't lay it out to start with and you have these problems, that's all I'm saying.
I'm good.
Uh, moving along, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm going to go through a little chronological order here and bring a little more definition to conversation. Uh, it's true, I was at the last meeting and I heard a lot of comments that were made. And I'm not going to chase all those comments, but I'm going to go ahead and present information that I believe is pertinent to the whole conversation. And I'm going to start with how we actually began looking for a, a fire station so that everyone has a good grasp of what we've been through to get to where we are today. Um, the whole conversation actually started, I'm going to assume it was about four years ago, maybe, um, when we started having serious conversations about trying to put a fire station north of the railroad tracks because the county is bisected in Livo. And one of the earliest conversations was actually started by the late city councilman, Keith Nixon. He came and visited with me. One and a half, um, the county could take over the whole operation of the city of Livo since we already handle all the emergency medical response. And he asked me if we could put information together that, that illustrate what could be done. And that's what we did. We spent, uh, spent quite a bit of time and we put a plan together and illustrated to the city what it would cost to take over their employees over time and, and the proposal we were going to use their firehouse over there on the other side of the tracks. And for whatever reason, that proposal just didn't get anywhere over the city of Livo. So then, later, and I don't know how much time later, we started looking at some property that was adjacent to the old Badcock warehouse, out there those open parcels. And we looked at those for a while and I think that, I believe Chief, Chief Summers weighed in on that conversation at the time. The problem with that one was that it was too far south for us to actually provide the type of service we were trying to achieve north of I-10. So, that property kind of fell by the wayside. After that, we looked at a property that was farther north on, north of the interstate at the corner of Fifty Second Terrace and US 129. On that property, it was small and the elevation was too low, it was a small piece of property. There was another one on Fifty Second Terrace, the owner, who we talked to, I spoke to, and he didn't have any interest in selling the property. And then we eventually ended up with eleven acres, the eleven acres that we purchased that we set out to purchase ten acres. And we ended up with eleven because of the easement to get back out to 129. It's important in the conversation too, I think, to recognize the, the size of the current station locations that we have compared to what we just purchased. The Welborn Station is on about point three-four acre. Very small property. The Beachville Station is on one acre. The Dally Park Station is on approximately one acre. The McCampan Station is actually on about two and a half acres. Sits way back off the road and our largest current station is Station One. And I think that was probably about two and a half acres until we just enlarged that recently so that we could build a pole barn on the west side of the existing station. So, it's probably close to five or six acres now. The proposal that we had been talking about to locate that fire station also hinged on our ability to pay for it and we paid for those types of things out of the fire budget. The property for the new fire station was paid for from the fire budget. We always have more needs than revenue. In fact, we wrestle through this every year in budget workshops, trying to fix, oftentimes making cuts so that we can make the, produce the balanced budget. But we financed trucks and equipment and we spread capital improvement plans over multiple years by escrow and for. We're just completing a pole barn out there now to protect our trucks and have been trying for a couple of years to plan the construction of a training facility at Station One. The seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant we obtained from the state for the new fire station probably is not going to cover the entire cost of that station. It's very unlikely. We're going to have to put more money with it. Once completed, the new station will need furnishings, equipment and personnel. We've never had the luxury of excess funds in the fire budget, but probably won't in foreseeable future. That's a very tight budget. The new station location, I'll discuss some. I'm, I'm not going to chase all of the comments made in previous meetings. I'm just going to tell you the facts as I know them. The objective was to purchase ten acres, period. It was that simple. I never heard anything about buying any additional acreage at any time. The, the plan is that it had been communicated, meaning we could buy ten acres. And my understanding was that it was the piece of, that property, for those that don't know, the property is kind of an L shape. It's a strange L shape, kind of reversed L, I guess. And if you picture an L, there was this vertical piece, the long piece that went all the way to the rear that we were supposed to be looking at. I was sent out there with about a two-page document that was an option to purchase to see about meeting with Mr. Cobble and having executed. We met on-site. Um, it was just a meeting between me and him and the meeting wasn't very long. I think we met, we maybe had worked that day. It seemed like it was later in the late afternoon or something, I don't remember. But the seller wanted the purchase price to be established by an appraisal rather than the price which had been included on the option agreement. I didn't have anything to do with the number that was on the option agreement. I don't know where that number came from, but there was a, a number that was written in there per acre price, I believe. But in any event, he wanted that, that number to actually be estated, uh, established by an appraisal. So, I handwrote that onto the option agreement. He also wanted the ability to remove the structure that was on the property. And I can't remember if it was a three-pack building or something that was built, but in any event, that wasn't a problem. I think I wrote that on the agreement as well. If we had the opportunity to remove that. The seller then spoke about his lack of desire to sell ten acres and be left with the balance. And when he said that, I thought that I was going out there that this had already been prearranged somehow that we were buying the ten acres. But when he talked about not wanting to be left with the balance, I told him then that I would see if I could find buyers of property. Now, he talked about another property as well. Um, he had, he and I talked for a few minutes about deer hunting, which he enjoys and I do. But he had told me about another property closer to the interstate and then, in my memory, I believe, I'm pretty sure it was sitting back, probably about as far back as we were, um, when we met out around the property. In fact, we met in the very location of the property that I thought that we were there to try to purchase, which was in the rear. So, I told him that I'd make some phone calls to people about the, not only the balance of this property, but the other ones as well that he had mentioned. And I don't know what the size of that property was. I honestly don't remember. Our meeting lasted, I'm, I'm going to speculate it was about fifteen minutes. It may have taken twenty minutes, I don't know, but it wasn't very long. So, I left there and I took the, he signed the option agreement and I believe I signed the option agreement, I must add. And then I took the option agreement and I gave it to Mr. Pervat. And following the completion of the appraisal and the survey, the contract for eleven acres was submitted to the board for approval and signed by Chair McGambel. And I'm not going to get into a big argument over, um, Mr. Land's comments about bringing this contract in at eleven acres, but the fact is that when we had historically drafted or put together an option agreement, it's a very basic document. In fact, I hope that you said you had a copy of it. It's a very basic document that establishes some fundamentals associated with the potential purchase. But the, the purchase is actually going to be predicated on a real contract, a formal contract. I don't know how many pages it is. But in any event, I'm confident that that contract spelled out an eleven acre purchase. And that eleven acre purchase, or somewhere close to eleven acres, I don't know the, remember the rough numbers, but it's, uh, whatever it took to create that easement back out to the, to the, uh, 129. So, I know it was about eleven acres and I'm confident that that's exactly what was written onto that contract for board consideration in a public meeting that it was for the eleven acres. It was not for nineteen acres or eighteen acres or twenty acres or whatever this is with the difference in the property. So, we fulfilled our objective. We brought a contract back here with the property and the size that we had set out to try to purchase. This board had never given us direction by any more than that. If I, if our objective had been to purchase nineteen acres, then that's what we would have attempted to do. And we would have drawn a contract back here for board consideration with nineteen acres on it. Following that meeting with the seller, I left there and did exactly what I told him I would do. I called, actually called two parties, which I thought might be interested in looking at the properties. And the reason I called these two parties, because over the months, some number of months, and I don't, it could have been six months, somewhere prior to the meeting that I had with the seller that day, um, there were two different parties which communicated to me a desire to purchase land and the, and that immediate disanity of 129 north of I-10. Um, one party was associated with a well-established business in that area. The other had explained that he had attempted to purchase property in the area but was unsuccessful. Both requested, and these are independent of one another, I don't think there's any association between these two, um, both had requested that if I heard of properties become available, that I let them know about it. So, when I contacted each of them, all I was, all I provided was my name and phone and told them I was aware that the, that there was property available and that they should contact us, gentlemen. The only other thing I can tell you about that is that I'm aware that both parties purchased properties. I know that to be a fact. I would submit that there's nothing unique about this situation at all. In fact, it happens all the time, not only here in Swanee County, but other counties. Not only with county officials, but with Realtors, the practice of facilitating a connection between buyers and sellers is a common occurrence. The state of Florida is also aware of this type of occurrence. To enhance the county's ability to facilitate buyers' awareness of the availability of certain types of property, the state makes grants available to counties for purposes of identifying and generating a list of available properties. In our case, Swanee County, we actually applied for and we were awarded a forty thousand dollar grant for the purpose of producing a preliminary due diligence study for a minimum of four specific parcels in Swanee County to determine whether site conditions are favorable and whether challenges exist for development of sites for commercial uses, um, commercial shipping, distribution operations, line industrial, manufacturing, assembly, et cetera. And the results of that report were for the purpose of making that information available to potential buyers. This is actually to facilitate the county sharing of information to potential buyers. I'm going to jump to, and I didn't know that y'all were going to talk about that sawmill out there, but now I'm going to, I'm going to move to something else because this all is pertinent, I believe. When Claussen began their activities out there at the site, um, I was contacting and asking if I could help them identify additional properties near the site that they could purchase. I obliged their request by providing as much information as I could assemble pertaining to nearby properties. Most of these were in the, I think almost all of them are up on the north end of the Catalina site. A couple of years later, a woman visited the office accusing me of trying to personally purchase the properties to personally gain. A representative of Claussen eventually cleared up with a woman by explaining it was Claussen who had made the purchases. I'm convinced that some people simply prefer to believe the worst about county officials and it's my opinion that their predisposition clouds their objectivity. Just like with Claussen, I have no business or financial ties to either of the two parties I contacted regarding the availability of property near I-10 and 129, nor do any of the... regarding the availability of property near I-10 and 129, nor do any of my family members. I have not received any commissions or any compensation of any kind associated with the purchases, nor have any of my family members. The continued bashing by some individuals, and I'm not suggesting that you're bashing, Commissioner Land, which has been going on for years. The continued bashing by some individuals of my connections to Marion County is disgusting at best. Swanee County has reaped significant benefits by not reaching out to businesses in Marion County for services that we need here. None of the savings that Swanee County has received has resulted in any compensation to me or any of my family members from any of those parties. And I'm gonna share a few examples with you. We, and I took a few just competitively bid services that we had released, where in many cases I picked up the phone and called companies in Marion County and said, "How about bidding on this competitively bid project?" Recently, we had bid out the underground utilities that's gonna be constructed out there, I-75. These savings that we received from a contractor who's located in Marion County, his bid, the amount that he was less than, the next low bid was six hundred and eight thousand dollars less. That's the savings that we realized by using a Marion County contractor. Well, not by using them, but actually inviting them to bid on our, in our bid procedure. That wasn't happening when I got here. We used to just advertise in the local newspaper and we hardly got any bid results. In fact, Commissioner Flumet might remember that. He was over here, standing on the board. When we were building the Mizel Building over here, we bid the sheet rock. And we asked for a material and labor's bid, and labor bid, and we got one incomplete bid that only included the labor. When I saw it, and then we figured out what the sheet rock was gonna cost, I knew that it was about ten thousand dollars tied. And in our board meeting, I discussed that with the board and asked them to reject the bid and let us bid it again. When we did, we got a couple of bids, and the low bid was in fact about ninety-three hundred dollars less than what it would have been. In fact, that sheet rock contractor lives in Silver Springs, Mr. Land, if you can believe that. I don't know where he lives. I didn't know the man before he came here, but he responded to the bid invitation. The signs out here in front of this building, in front of all these county office buildings, were actually constructed by a company in O'Callaghan. And we bid those out. I think we got three bids. And the lowest bid, the one from O'Callaghan, was thirty-seven hundred dollars less than the next low bid, and considerably less than the company that was from Swanee County. So that's six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars worth of savings by reaching out to entities in Marion County to bid on our work. Another thing that I had experience in, in Marion County, was building these chip seal roads. And when I first attempted to get those introduced to you here, it was soundly rejected. But then later it came back and the board finally agreed to start that process, and that's worked out very well for us. It was gonna save us a pile of money over the years. So we're budgeting for that, and that's working out well for us. The last thing I'll mention about Marion County, because again, I'm talking about how unnecessary it is to bash the relationship that we have with Marion County. Last thing I'll mention, this, this wasn't a bid service or a paid-for service, was that the honor guard for Chief Summer Service was actually from Marion County. They came up here in respect for our fire chief and for this county at their own expense. It's been ten years since I've lived in Marion County, and I can't erase that fact. But if the board believes that there is any merit in discontinuing my outreach to businesses located in Marion County for competitive bids or discontinuing attempts to oblige persons and/or businesses from Marion County who wish to invest here, all I need is for the board to make that decision and provide me with that direction. These people come to me and ask for information on properties. I don't go to them. And to answer your question very directly, Mr. Land, the best I can, unless you have additional questions. Mr. Adams was actually one of those parties that had come to me and indicated that he had tried to buy a piece of property out there in that immediate area and it was unsuccessful. And asked me to let him know if something became available out there. He was one of them. And the other, like I said, is directly associated with a very visible business out there in that area. It's my understanding that both of them bought property. When the contract was written, let me just say, when I dropped the option off with Mr. Pravat, I was no longer involved in anything that occurred out there. I wasn't present at the closing, period. Wasn't even there. And I think that there was a statement made that I was present at the closing, but I wasn't. I was never, I never had any conversation with the seller of that property after that fifteen to twenty-minute meeting. And I would submit that if what you're indicating is what he told you, then he and I had a different opinion on parts of our conversation that occurred out there. But at no time did I ever, ever communicate to him that the county was interested in buying nineteen acres of property for that fire station out there. And I made it clear that I would attempt to find someone who had an interest in the balance of the property. Not only that, but the other one that he had mentioned to me that's somewhere out there and closer to the interstate. So that's all I can tell you. Mr. Adams did live across the street from me. He lived down the road from me a little bit when I lived there. And he reached out to me and had an interest in buying property here. And he's bought other properties here, and I'm aware of that. So it wasn't surprising at all to me or alarming that he could ask me about property out there on 129.
Commissioner Land, what was yours?
Yes, sir. I mean, I realize this is a boardroom and not a courtroom. But I mean, I need answers, and this is the only place I got to ask them, was what we got to work with. Ms. Harris, I mean, I want to commend you for reaching out to, to your contacts in Marion County when it comes to saving Swanee County taxpayers' money. I don't think that's a bad thing. I think that's your job, be prudent, prudent in how you spend those, and you know, that's what we all signed up to be. So I mean, I appreciate those efforts and you seeking wherever it may take you to find the best deal for the people here. I will say that, that by reaching out to your contacts in Marion County for, for investment properties, I think that our local taxpayers that spend their money and bring tax dollars here to this county deserve a shot at those opportunities as well. You know, I, I would like to know, I mean, I got a couple of questions. How do you know Mr. Adams? Mr. Ron Adams?
He lived down the street from me in Silver Springs.
Have you had any other business dealings with Mr. Adams?
No.
You've already stated you aren't profiting in, at any way, shape, or form, nor your family members, from any of those companies.
Can I ask you a question, just a second?
Yeah, sure.
Just interrupt, one second, because I want to comment on something you said, and I don't want you to do it. The, and I meant to write this down earlier when we were speaking to it, so I apologize for interrupting you. But you asked about Mr. Cobble retaining that front piece of property. And I would agree with you that maybe we should have done that. And that would have been an excellent opportunity to set that up at the time that that meeting occurred and even more importantly, the time that, and I wasn't there, okay? But I know that at some point he had to have seen the contract and had an opportunity to communicate whatever it was that he wanted to do with that.
According to Mr. Cobble, and maybe, I mean, maybe we need to get a state attorney involved, so we got subpoenas, because we got conflicting stories here. I don't, I don't know that answer yet. But according to Mr. Cobble, he was never given the option to retain front piece. When he started talking to us, the county, you, he didn't clearly state who, but he said that we, our people, never gave him an option to keep what is now the front parcel. It was an all-or-nothing deal. Now, I'd like to ask Mr. Pravat, unless you got an answer for that, but that's what Mr. Cobble said.
I got a question. I got a question.
All right.
Because I, because I don't know, and I didn't talk to him at any time prior to that, prior to that meeting. And I think that Mr. Hale had indicated that he had had a conversation. Is that correct, Mr. Hale?
I'm sorry.
Did you have a conversation with Mr. Cobble about ten acres?
That's all I did talk to him about.
Okay.
We got nothing about that.
So if that actually occurred, if Mr. Hale tells us the truth, and I believe that maybe you are.
I'm sure he is.
I don't have any reason to believe otherwise. If you had had that conversation with Mr. Cobble earlier on, before I ever went out there, then that's, that would have been an excellent opportunity for Mr. Cobble to consider splitting that piece out and maybe doing something different with it. That's just an observation.
Yeah, I understand.
But I agree, we could have got it all, I mean, if I made more sense, but.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, when you were speaking to Mr. Cobble in your initial meetings, how did the contract come about to purchase the whole parcel? Because the original purchase, whatever, option agreement, whatever you called it, that original contract that started on paper was for the entire nineteen and some odd acres parcel. So how did we get there? Because...
I can't, I can't speak to that. I didn't draft that document.
Who drafted? It's got your name at the top. So who, who, who?
I didn't, but I didn't write this. I didn't write it.
Okay. Well, who asked Mr. Pravat, who asked you, Mr. Pravat, to write that original option agreement? Who instructed you to do that?
Mr. Harris.
Mr. Harris did, for nineteen point six one acres. Mr. Harris says you...
I, I was never familiar with the conversation. The only thing I was familiar with was the conversation that I'd heard from Mr. Hale about ten acres out there. I knew that the whole parcel was nineteen something acres, and I knew that what I was supposed to do was go out there and find about ten acres.
Okay. Well, I don't have a copy of it in print, but I got a contract with your name at the top as an undisclosed confidential agent for the buyer, which we already, which we already talked about, for nineteen point six one acres. So if, Mr. Vat's saying you told him to draw that up. You're saying you didn't know anything about the nineteen point six one acres?
I didn't know anything about the nineteen point six one acres. I was specifically wanting to draw about ten acres.
But you signed the contract for nineteen point six one acres.
Oh, absolutely. I did.
So as an...
And you know why?
As an employee of the county, shouldn't you have brought that back to the board, say, "Hey, guys, I actually got a contract on the whole piece"? As a paid employee for Swanee County, I got a contract on this whole parcel now in my personal name. What do y'all want to do with this? Do y'all still want to buy just ten? Shouldn't that, Mr. Hale, now get started negotiations with Mr. Cobble? If the first paper contract written on the parcel was between you and Mr. Cobble for the entire piece, shouldn't it have been Mr. Hale's or the board's decision to decide the path that that process took? And who ended up with what since you, paid for by the employee and directed by Mr. Hale, had a contract on the whole piece?
The board had their opportunity to make a decision on the property when the contract came back from the board.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner White.
Do we have a copy of any of this? Can I look at it? Contracts, the agreement, anything?
I can print you a copy. I didn't print a copy of print, but I can print you a copy.
I mean, the auction agreement, we got a copy of that?
Yes, sir. I have a copy of it.
The, the contract that is in the minutes is strictly on the parcel that we ended up with. For the exact dollar price for everything matches. It's between Mr. Cobble and the board accounting commissioners. The original contract, that's, that the first piece of paper on the property was a contract between you and Mr. Cobble for the whole piece. And that's why I'm confused on, I feel like you lost, that's where it got cloudy, like, Mr. Hale started it. He started to negotiate. The property wasn't even on the market for sale. Mr. Hale approached Mr. Cobble and asked him if he would sell. He said yes. He handed it over to you to buy the ten acres. Why did you get a contract on twenty, nineteen point something?
I got an option.
Okay, you got an option. You got, you got deals on the whole piece.
I got an option. That's what I got. I got an option on the thing. It was turned into a contract that we actually wanted to purchase. What we actually wanted to purchase was ten acres. We ended up buying eleven acres.
I understand. So did you potentially see the opportunity for Mr. Adams, who lived down the street from you, to make just, make a substantial amount of money? I mean, he's asking ten times what he paid for. Was that, was there any incentive for you to, to, to... Was that your incentive to call Mr. Adams because you had the whole parcel under contract now?
No. No, I had no idea when we took that document out there that he wasn't going to let me sell us just the ten acres that we wanted to buy.
But, but when he did, and it was different than what Mr. Hale sent you out there for, shouldn't that been Swanee County's decision to determine the path that that purchase went? Oh, shouldn't it?
It wasn't different than what Mr. Hale sent me out there to do. Mr. Hale told me that it was supposed to be ten acres.
But it's nineteen, it was the whole parcel.
The option was on the entire parcel.
Right.
My job was to communicate to him that we only wanted ten acres of that parcel, and that's what I did. And that's when he informed me, when I told him, "We're only interested in ten acres of this", that's when he informed me on this, it's a two-page document out there, that he didn't want to sell that and he left with the balance. Now, I would agree that if he had separated that out when he spoke to Mr. Hale and done something different with it, then my meeting with him at the very beginning would have turned out entirely differently. He could have had that separated out. He could still separate a thing out without signing the auction agreement. He didn't. Now, let me say this, and you're familiar with this. No one has to sign an auction agreement. No one has to sign a contract. We had a conversation about what the county wanted. We wanted ten acres, period. And I'm convinced that only because I told him that I can make a phone call and try to find some buyer for these other properties that you have, that he went ahead and agreed.
Okay.
Okay? Because now he's selling everything that he wants to sell, and the county's ending up with only what we want at that point.
Okay. According to Mr. Cobble, and I believe at some point we're going into subpoenas and oaths and all this stuff because we're getting conflicting stories. According to Mr. Cobble, that original option purchase between you and him was for sixty-five hundred dollars or appraised value, whichever was higher. Mr. Bill O'Connor here in town appraised the property at eight thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars an acre. At that time, you stated you never spoke to Mr. Cobble again but for your fifteen-minute meeting at the property. At that time, Mr. Cobble says, "You called him on the phone and said, 'Hey, we have a small problem. The appraisal came back at higher than the purchase price that we had budgeted for. So I'm gonna need to bring in another buyer because the county doesn't have the additional funds at a hundred and sixty thousand for the whole pro- property.'"
That isn't true.
Okay. There again. So Mr. Cobble states that you said on the telephone, "Do you mind if I bring another buyer to the table to finish this deal and buy it?" And he said, "I don't care, as long as I don't get stuck with the part in, in the back, and you guys take the front." And you said, "Oh, no, we'll, we'll buy it all." And that is how Mr. Adams came to the table. He never met Mr. Adams. He didn't know Mr. Adams. He didn't come up with the division of the property, the survey. Mr. Alcorn may be here, maybe Mr. Alcorn can shed some light on why the parities were surveyed out that way and who instructed him to do so. I mean, there again, Mr. Chairman, I understand this isn't a courtroom. This is a boardroom, but...
I, I have a problem with your questions. The meeting's going like it needs to go, right? And it's going, people's being respectful of each other. You're asking questions. These gentlemen have a right to answer.
Oh, absolutely. Continue ahead, absolutely.
In my defense, that property has always been two parcels since, I think, the first time I was over there in nineteen ninety-two. That part, that property has always been two parts. It's always been the triangle part. And it's always been the rectangle ten acres that runs east to west.
Perfect. So if that's the case, how do we end up, that's even better. Like, how did we end up with, there was a ten-acre piece sitting there. Why didn't we just, why did we run an option on the other piece? There wasn't a, there was our... There wasn't a, there was already two parcels. So why did we even tie up the nineteen acres? Mr. Harris?
I don't have any idea.
So, Mr. Pravat? Mr. Pravat, why did we tie up the whole nineteen, both parcels? Why did we write options on both of those if Mr. Hale had instructed us to only buy ten? Why did we, why did we write an option on the twenty, nineteen, nineteen point six?
I was instructed to, to do that, and the sixty-five hundred dollar number came from, I think, a conversation through Mr. Hale to, Mr. Harris to me.
I don't know where the sixty-five hundred came from.
I don't recall that either. I, I think those were...
Yeah, I mean, those are just, that, that, that's really irrelevant. I mean, the appraisal set the purchase price, that's real estate.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Based on something that Mr. Alcorn just said. Um, because I'll submit to you, I didn't look this property up. I didn't do any research on the property at all. I knew I was going to try to buy ten acres, and I knew what Mr. Hale told me. But, um, does anyone know if there's more than one of the parcel ID number on the property? I mean, there are two different parcel ID numbers.
Yes, sir.
There's just one?
One, as far as I remember.
Okay. Well, I don't have any idea yet.
Okay.
How, how it ended up at nineteen acres. Um, because I never set out to buy anything but ten.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Can I make a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we, as a board, um, either, either set aside some funds to do a private investigation outside of what we're doing here, um, you know, that that has a little more, uh, I don't know, abilities, capabilities to research this independently, privately on their own, to, 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 to give the taxpayers a real answer on what exactly happened and why, and for the people that, that, that comment or testify have some, you know, some type of subpoena or under oath or something, accountability for the, the, you know, testimony that they make, and, um, and, and see what happens. I think that, that, that the folks have a right to know, and, and, and secondly, you know, hopefully they find nothing. And, and all this is, you know, I'm, I'm barking at the wrong tree. But, uh, i- i- it sure smells funny to me, and, and I think the people of Swan County have a right to know what exactly happened, and as a board, that we've, that we searched it and sniffed it out as far as we possibly could. And, uh, and then what are we gonna do to, to fix it so it doesn't happen again? Um, the taxpayers got lost in the shuffle on this deal. I mean, it's clearly, they got, they got, there wasn't, there was, I won't say opportunity because Mr. Pravat doesn't like the investment opportunity, but we had a opportunity to put our fire station on a twenty-acre piece wherever we needed it to be. And then, and we weren't given that opportunity. I, I would like to see the, see us, uh, turn it over to, you know, maybe the governor appoints a, a, someone, or maybe a state attorney gets involved, or maybe we have to spend some taxpayer dollars to, to research this with an outside firm from, you know, outside of here. But I think that, that we got a few more rocks to kick over.
I've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Land. Do I have a second?
Can I say something?
You can. We can open it for discussion. We have a motion to...
Uh, I like transparency, and it's not that I don't believe Mr. Harris or Mr. Pravat, but I do think there's some questions here. And I just wanted to explain why I have no second. And I do.
Commissioner? I was just gonna say, if you second it...
I mean...
Well, I, it's still, we still got it.
Okay.
I mean, there's gonna be a vote on it, so, but you still have, like, your statement.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I, I just, I mean, I, I don't disagree with anything Commissioner Land's saying or any of us, any discussion we're having here. Um, I'm just, I'm, I'm just upset at where at this point, where we're at. I, I agree with Mr. Alcorn. I believe when I looked at the properties out there, they were all fenced off. There was one tract here, one tract there, um, and that was the tract that I had laid mine on.
I understand.
And I think I even asked the chief to run it and look at it, but I didn't want to make anything on paper to bring to this board until, whilst the chief has shit to look at. And that was the property I had certainly had to look at. So, how we got here, you know? Uh...
I'm happy.
I think everyone needs to actually make a comment. Do you have anything you'd like to say? Commissioner Fleming?
I wasn't gonna say anything, Mr. Chairman, but I don't know how we got to this point, to where we're at, and we are making progress. I think progress has been made. I vividly remember the, the fire station, when the county was trying to purchase some land, and Mr. Harris and I rode and, uh, didn't wanna mention all this, but I had a town hall meeting and there was a discussion, uh, of a fire station across the river. I think that any time that you're trying to make some progress, you know, you're always gonna have some obstacles. You're always have some things, but I, I really, I'm kinda a hawk between two opinions. Because we're trying to make some progress, and in the progress that we are going, when I desire to do right, he was always present. So, not saying that anybody's evil, but an opportunity to speak for itself. It is what it is and how it's happening. And I'm a person like this. When I say what I, I mean when I say, I don't like dissension, I don't care about dissension. I like a clear understanding, uh, I love a clear understanding of why or how we're getting to this point to where what was purchased, like I said, I'm not in, didn't get involved. I got a phone call and the video was not in here. It's not a question, why did you call me when you're not here? And I, you know, it's gonna be on video. If you got my phone number, you can call me. I'm meeting. Why are you not here? Bring me into the fold. Me as a commissioner, I have a notice out to get into something that, well, you know what the progress is? We got progress, we're trying to make some progress. And I, I hope, my prayer is that, that we get to the bottom of it. We got a motion and a second. Let's move on, and, and let's move forward.
I've got a couple of comments here before we do a real one on it. I would just like to say, I appreciate everybody's patience tonight. I know coming into this is gonna be a tough meeting. It's been a tough couple of weeks. I don't hold that against anybody. All I ask for is, like I ask Commissioner Land and everyone else, I ask for everybody to have an opportunity to speak and us to be respectful, and let's continue to engage in conversation, and I appreciate you for respecting that. It's, uh, just so many times you get up here and people get to talking over each other and they can't hear, and then the people in the audience or the people on the video, they can't understand what's being said. So it's my job to try to keep peace. It's not my job to disrespect any one of you commissioners. That's not me, that's not what I wanted to do, that's not the way I was raised. Uh, I wanted to be professional, and I wanted to, to move forward as a board. Obviously, there's some questions that's not, that hasn't been answered, and I don't, I don't, I don't have a problem for one minute stating that the only way I see that this board will ever move forward together is for us to all get a satisfactory answer. There's no other way. We're, we're gonna come into a meeting every week, and we're gonna have a dissension, and we're gonna, until this is, comes to a conclusion, and we gotta figure out how to get there. So I just want to say that. I want to work through this as quickly as we can, try to find the answers that we need, and, uh, try to find the folks to help us get there. So with that being said, I got Commissioner Land has made a motion. Commissioner White is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to one. Mr. Fleming, send it.
At this time, I will, uh, open the floor to any public comments. If anyone here is wishing to speak or wishing to be heard, it doesn't matter what it contains to you, welcome to come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. See, and now at this time, I'll close. I'm sorry. Just your name and address for the record to start with.
Hello, board. My name's Glenn Allen Byrd. I own parcel over at one thirty-seven, one thirty-six, has been part of the discussion here. And, um, anyway, I'd be getting lost for words, especially when I'm nerved out. You see, I'm shaking. Um, we've, we've been tied up in a legal wobble myself, with these folks myself, for quite a while, uh, over the land that I own over there. Um, well, Mr. Ronald Adams and, uh, uh, Mr. Harris came to my property on Sunday, and I don't know, we, I, I just wanted to know what was going on over there because I saw a lot of things happening. I had no idea what was happening, but it's like, and I did contact the county several times, had building and zoning, and asked them what was going on, and they kept saying nothing, you know, you know, nothing. And I'm like, well, something's going on, I wanna know what it is. It's at my back door, my own property there. Got me a nothing, nothing, nothing. Found out a short time afterwards, it took me some investigation on my own to find out that they had a, uh, thirty million dollar grant going on this whole time. I don't understand why they were telling me nothing was going on when they had grants happen and, and, and big grants and concerning over eleven acres that I own. And I kinda got cornered in a situation where, I, I call it cornered, because I didn't feel comfortable, I felt like I was bullied, I felt as if I was being overwhelmed, let's put it that way. I was out of my league. And then talked to, it's like, well, you know, you need to sell this property because if you don't, you're gonna be stuck back here with a piece of dirt that won't be worth And I have done a whole lot of investigations on this thing, on Mr. Harris and Ron Adams. And he say, you don't know him, he lived across the street from him in Port St. Lucie or wherever that was. Like I said, I, I got memory of it sometimes. But I also dug up where they were in Cala together. It seems like when Harris went someplace, Ron Adams would follow him thereafter. And I've got a bit of a paper trail on that. So anyways, like I said, I, I've been, I've, I've, on my defense with, with that scuffle over there, like I said, I've done a lot of investigations and I've lost a lot of sleep, and I've taken up a lot of my personal time. Let me take off these glasses here. It even went down to a piece of, uh, I'll put it this way, um, one of the first things, as I was asking what was going on up there, and I was being told nothing, 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 all of a sudden, within a matter of hours, maybe a day or so, before the grant went through, I believe, like, 'cause I gotta go back to my papers and time logs, the, there were three main pieces of property that went from the motel by one thirty-six, I mean, yeah, one by I seventy-five, over through the entire area that was within the area that they were talking about for, uh, the, uh, the grant. And those three properties, three, I think it was three properties, sold, maybe four, sold within an hour of, well, the titles changed. I don't know really when they sold, but the titles changed in a matter of hours or a day. And you can go on there and you can look in the Swan County records, and you'll see that they changed, the dates are there. And I also had myself, I had a, I had been friends with one of the property owners that had about, I think it was fifty-nine acres, that went from, uh, through the pine trees, if anybody knows where they are there. Um, I think it was about fifty-nine acres, and that also backed up to my entire property because I, I, I own, sorry, scared me, uh, 'cause I own considerable acres back there, not only the eleven acres, but I own, I live back there, and I have all total plus sixty acres back there, including that eleven. And I had, uh, been taking care of that front property that was owned by a gentleman, I guess I won't say his name, you all can look it up, um, it was about fifty-nine acres. And as far as I was concerned, the way I took care of the property, and we had a, a verbal agreement that I would have the first right to refuse if and when the time came that things were gonna start getting hot. And when finally I heard about it getting changed over, it was a little bit late, somebody was put in contract, I believe it was in September two thousand eighteen, to purchase the property, providing that something happened in early two thousand nineteen, which was when, if I got the date right, that's when the grant went through. They weren't gonna buy the property if that grant didn't go through. So somebody has some information over there that will, will tie this pro, and I tried several times to buy it, I, you know, it's like, hey, I got the money, I'll give it. But, you know, they, they said, well, they got us in a contract, there's nothing we can do. And, uh, so they, um, tied up the contract, and I just really thought that odd that, it's like, well, why would they hold this con, buy it or sign contract like in September two thousand eighteen in regard to something happening in early two thousand nineteen? And like I said, with my own digging, I finally figured it out. And, well, I, I even talked to the land clearers out there, that was, the way I figured out that something happened, I saw the land, I found out that the land had been sold, the three, three major parcels out there, and that's cut me off from being able to do anything. This, this cut my property off to where I, I couldn't be part of this growth. Uh, and then it's like I said, you know, they, well, you know, if you don't sell this thing, you're gonna be stuck back here, and you're gonna have a piece of dirt, you're gonna pay taxes on forever, and it's not gonna be worth anything, is what I was told by Mr. Harris. And like I said, there was a couple land clearers up there, and I went up there and I was trying to figure out what's going on. And the first guy that was out there was just cutting down the big timber that, you know, that, that was worth valuable. They, he just said, well, they just told me to come get it, they don't want anything for it. Um, and I said, well, what's going on? He says, I'm not really sure, but it's hush, hush. And then there's another contractor out there doing the major clearing, and of course he, we talked too, and I won't go into what he said, but it falls in line with what's Okay, as I've already mentioned, building and zoning. I've never thought about transparency. And like I said, they, I, I do have papers, but anyways, and the only other thing I've, I've been trying to figure it out is like, okay, so, and Ronald Adams, by the way, um, is the one... And Ronald Adams, by the way, is the one that's on, that I was mostly told about in the beginning. And like I said, it ended up being part of this NSIGHT thing. And I've tried several times, in fact, I talked to the state about two weeks ago before this whole thing grew up. Trying to find out who is on the board of NSIGHT. And they said, well, it's an LLC, they don't have to put that out to public. It's like, well, can I find out who it is? And I, they, you know, that's it. If it's LLC, they won't, can't tag it, so... But all I can... And then after that, it's like, well, okay, so this NSIGHT and Ron Adams is buying up all this property. And I was trying to figure out, well, where Mr. Harris going to make the money at? And I did. He owns a corporation called I-Mark Construction that's based here in Library. That seems to me that if he is friends with the person that owns all this property, what do you think I-Marks want to do? So I figured, I mean, if he's not getting a part of the commissions or making money on property sales like that, then, you know... He owns the construction company in this town, and all of a sudden, this grant comes through and money starts flying around building stuff. I mean, if you own that, you're a good, if you're a full-fledged contractor and you're friends with the guy. I mean, it just seems to me that, you know...
We appreciate your comments, sir. Everything says, dearly noted and on the record. Is there anything else?
Well, I better not, because I can't speak too much past my writings, because, and I wrote that all while I was sitting over there. I don't know, I just, it's a huge can of worms, and I've been involved myself for a long time.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm tired.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak before a closed public comment? Seeing none at this time, a closed public comment. One thing, we have announced closed comments from the commissioners. Commissioner White, you have anything?
Oh, I'm like y'all, I hate that it's come to this, but I feel like there's some unanswered questions here that we need to get to the bottom of. And if this is what it takes to do it, then so be it, that's what we're going to do.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Land, closed comments?
I agree with Commissioner White. I mean, I hate that we're here. It's a little bit of negative light on our board, on our county, and I hate that, I truly do. But at the end of the day, we need to be transparent, we need to be honest on how we handle these people's money. It's their money, and then, and that's all I want to do is to make sure that we're doing a good job at being solid stewards of their money and operating above the table with it, because it's not ours. I mean, that's all that I got. I do hate that we're here. But like you said, I think there's some dissension amongst our constituents and our county or our board. You know, there's some concerns there, and it's our responsibility to get to the bottom of it for those guys. I mean, we're their voice, we're servants of them. And, you know, I just, I just, I think we're doing the right thing to get to the bottom of it so we can move forward and continue the progress that Mr. Fleming spoke about. I have to know that that fire station's a need. I'm one hundred percent on board with that fire station. Those folks up there need that. I'm behind that a hundred percent. But I also want to do it in the best way that benefits our people. With that, I mean, that's all I got for tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Fleming?
I would have to thank you too.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Hale?
I have one thing, it's a little bit lighter notes that we've all kind of been waiting on coming past. And I meant to mention this at the last meeting.
We got a backseat?
We got a backseat, yeah. This is with the wastewater plant by Osta. I know a lot of you guys have been following that, and we've been waiting for the construction to get completed. I've got word it is completed. They added another seven point eight million gallon holding capacity. That's huge, guys, that's something we really vote for. Just want to thank the other counties that have stepped up to help us see this coming fast. But they also added ten more of those stations as well. And luckily for them, I think they said they projected it at two point three million, but it came in under budget at one point eight million. So, that's good news for anyone who's a little bit of a cliche in the Swanee. So, just wanted to share that.
Thank you, sir. I just echo the board. I'm grateful that we're able to close out the meeting with some positive comments and respect for each other. That means a lot to me. I look forward to getting some answers on some things that's, you know... I mean, there is some things that we need to get cleared up and have for this board to be able to function. It needs to satisfy everyone on the board. I think the satisfied person has to satisfy everybody that's on this board. So, sooner we can get to that place and we move forward as a county, I... Other than that, I just, I know Bollwood has Corpus on the square this weekend. It's a good time for everyone in the county to come out and actually try to be a part of it, support it. This year's going to be a little different, but seeing Ms. Hillary here, she's got her hands full trying to get the chamber everything taken care of this week. It's a busy week for her, but we're thankful for your contributions and all you do and all the chamber does. With that, all I need is a motion to a...
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I know we made a motion and it passed. I don't really know where we go from there. Do you want me to contact the state attorney's office and see what their recommendation is? I mean, we're talking about an investigation, but I don't know who is finding who and who does what, so to speak. I don't know. Do you want me to contact them or ask for suggestions? Or do we go to, is there a court association of counties that may give us some direction on how to do this? Because I'm out of...
Not next year, I think. I mean, that would be my...
I just don't know, I don't know if I was responsible for this or somebody else.
Well, I don't think anybody knows exactly what to do or how to do, but I think reaching out to fact and going through. Through...
That's where we're going tomorrow, right?
Yeah.
I think we should start there and...
I just sent one to Bollwood in my court, and I didn't know it, so...
I went for one thinking there's to get an investigation.
So, okay. I guess we can start with fact.
I would say at this time that we just try to get some input and then maybe not at our regular board meeting.
Well, that's what I was liking.
At the regular board meeting, try to have an idea of how we want to proceed or who we want to proceed with. Not this coming one that just takes the COVID. I don't think we're scheduled for the third Tuesday of the month.
Okay.
Have a discussion. That gives a couple of weeks to try to come up with some ideas of how we want to do and what we want to do. All right. With that being said, no one has any other comments? I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Land, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign.